Tenth row.
Ten?
Oh.
What?
What?
Twelve, what?
Uh, Jen, fourteen. We're all gonna go?
What?
Bob just touched it.
About what?
Fourteen.
Oh, man.
Fourteen.
You're going.
I know. I'm, you know, I'm excited.
Indeed. Okay. Okay, boys, ready? Oh, it's six thirty-five, smarty. It's the last time I get to do that.
You do it so well.
Good evening and welcome to the April first, two thousand fourteen Lawrence City Commission meeting. The first item on the agenda is to deliver the state of the city address, so I'll start that now. When I first ran for city commission in two thousand six, I did so wanting to help find solutions to areas I saw as challenges for the Lawrence community. Back then, one of the main issues was finding a suitable and more permanent location for the Lawrence community shelter. I'm proud to say a solution was found and LCS is now operating in a location where they can effectively carry out their mission and focus on programming that addresses needs related to housing, employment, education, and counseling. During the seven years I've served on the city commission, I've witnessed numerous debates and discussions about community needs. Along with my fellow commissioners, I've worked hard to find solutions to these challenges. I'm proud to have served our city and I look forward to being a part of the future solutions that impact our residents' daily lives. Over the past year, the city commission has worked to address numerous challenges. Less than a year ago, the city and the University of Kansas broke ground at Rock Chalk Park. Construction has steadily progressed since then, and this April will see the first event held on the grounds of the park, the Kansas Relays. The formation of Rock Chalk Park was a solution to several issues. Lawrence needed more space for recreational programming for residents, and we saw an opportunity to benefit from the traveling tournament circuit that thousands of residents are involved in through youth sports. The University of Kansas needed to upgrade their facilities for soccer, track, and softball. The city's newest recreation center will open in September for expanded recreational programming, wellness, and fitness opportunities. Multiple challenges were solved with the creation of Rock Chalk Park, and our growing partnership with the University of Kansas was further strengthened. Another example of a problem solved was the city's acquisition of the former farmland property on East K-ten Highway. The area had been abandoned by its previous owners, and the city recognized there was challenges in Lawrence for providing large-scale industrial zone lots, which appealed to businesses looking to expand or relocate. The city acquired the land in two thousand nine, but the bulk of the infrastructure work, the roads, the detention ponds, the site grading, has occurred over the last year. We now have Lawrence Venture Park, ready and open for business in Lawrence. Every few years, the city conducts a citizen survey to find out what our community sees as a top priority. Consistently, our surveys rate east-west traffic congestion as the top issue. Now thankfully, after many years of design and construction, the single biggest construction project to address this issue is underway, the South Lawrence Trafficway. This one hundred and twenty-nine point eight million dollar project will dramatically change travel in Lawrence and northeast Kansas as a whole. The state of Kansas sees this project as the number-one priority in their current transportation program and is predicted to have the highest economic impact of all the expansion projects in the state. The city has been supportive of KDOC's efforts throughout the process, and we look forward to two thousand sixteen when the significant transportation challenge for our community is solved. Another top priority for our community for the past several years is street maintenance and how we are working to improve our road infrastructure. I'm proud to report our efforts are paying off and we're making progress on improving the existing pavement conditions, but there's still much work to do. We've also made a commitment to providing multi-modal infrastructure improvements with our planning process through the passage of our complete streets' planning policy. It's inconvenient to travel a detour, slow down when you're in a hurry, but we have to keep in mind that we've got major projects underway and we're completing them in the most efficient manner possible. The reconstruction of Bob Billings Parkway, South Castle Street, and Iowa Street Fifteenth are all great examples of the work we're doing to make travel more convenient, safer, and more inclusive of alternate forms of transportation. Over the past few years, trash talk has been pretty common at City Hall. Not negative trash talk like the kind you lob at your brother-in-law before playing a game of basketball, but real substantive talk about our city's sanitation and recycling services. This discussion arose out of a sustainability challenge. The city wanted to ensure our residents had a way to recycle materials in a convenient and uniform method available to all. This fall, our vision becomes a reality as we roll out curbside recycling as a city service. Downtown development is incredibly important to Lawrence and our local business community. There have been many challenges in downtown this year, from land use to increased parking availability. This year, we've opened up a new garage at seven hundred block in Vermont, which added additional three hundred and twenty-four parking spaces. The new garage opened in early August. Within a few weeks, the public was using it at capacity for events, programs, and downtown shopping trips. Additionally, in downtown, we're addressing the need for expanded library services and programs, the creation of more downtown living opportunities, the promotion of the arts and the cultural amenities, and working to balance the needs of a thriving downtown with the neighboring residents. As Lawrence continues to grow and develop, our job as city commission only becomes more difficult as we work away competing interests and financial ability and community needs. Our job as elected officials is to push forward these ideas, thoughts, and policies that suit our collective vision for Lawrence. A job is never done. Over the next year, we'll work to address significant issues including whether or not our community should build a new police facility, update our comprehensive plan to address growth and expansion of Lawrence and Douglas County, and we'll work to enforce an expanded rental registration program with the goal of increasing the health and safety of renters and those who live in multi-unit housing. Each of these projects is a work in progress. Once we cut a ribbon or launch a new program, our job is not done. It is our responsibility to the citizens of Lawrence to remain committed to providing excellent city services that enhance the quality of life of our community. As a commission, we've worked to build the infrastructure needed to take Lawrence to the next level in terms of economic development, opportunities, and now it's time to deliver. Lawrence Venture Park is ready for development. The second phase of the Bioscience and Technology Business Center at the University of Kansas is nearing completion. The South Lawrence Trafficway is under construction. I look to our community leaders, our business community, and city staff to push forward and bring opportunities to Lawrence. We've committed the tax dollars needed to build these projects. Let's finish the job by growing existing businesses and bringing companies and jobs to Lawrence. Building our tax base will result in more jobs, more homes sold in Lawrence, and more investment in our community overall. I want to thank my family, my wife, Lee Beth, and my two daughters, Mackenzie and Kylie, for supporting me during my year as mayor. Balancing work and family is difficult, and the difficulty level increases when you take on responsibility of serving on Lawrence City Commission. My hope is the energy and time expended will help make Lawrence a better community for them and all the residents in the future. I also want to thank the citizens of Lawrence who honored me with the opportunity to serve on the city commission. It's been a privilege to serve the amazing residents of Lawrence. Thanks go to Mike Amix for his many years of service to the community and for serving as vice mayor this past year. To Commissioner Shum, Farmer, and Reardon, I want to express my deep gratitude for serving the community this past year and bringing great energy and effort to the job of city commissioner. It's been an honor to serve the citizens of Lawrence with you. And finally, I want to thank each and every one of the employees of the city of Lawrence. Your dedication to the city and the citizens of Lawrence is greatly appreciated. Without great people, our city would not be what it is today and the achievements previously outlined impossible. Mayors and commissioners come and go, but the talented people who serve our community behind the scenes for many years are what makes Lawrence one of the best cities in America. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so that was the first part of the discussion. You'll get to hear me read a total of six proclamations this evening. You'll probably be tired of hearing me speak, but again, it's my last opportunity, so bear with me. This evening, we have six proclamations, and the first one is to proclaim April first, two thousand fourteen, as the National Service Recognition Day. Is there anyone to speak to this?
Do I just step up here?
You do, thank you.
All right.
Please step up.
Hi, my name is Sophia Archuleta. I am the AmeriCorps Program Manager with United Way here in Lawrence. And with me, I have a handful of our AmeriCorps members, well, they're National Service members, serving here in Lawrence. Last year was dedicated, they started the national, the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service. And every day, our AmeriCorps members are serving behind the scenes in our community, supporting local food banks, the community shelter, building homes, providing health services, tutoring and mentoring students, and managing community volunteers, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. They do so much more, as I think you've seen today, you went in and saw what some of our members do. So, um, so today is just recognizing our members, and it presents a unique opportunity to spotlight the key role that National Service plays in solving local problems and challenges. So by participating in this Day of Recognition, we highlight the impact of citizen service, show support to our nonprofits and National Service, National Service groups, and inspire our residents to serve in the community. So I want to say thank you to our members for their service, and thank you, Mayor, for your service and for recognizing this wonderful group of people, so.
Well, thank you. Yes, today was a great day, and I learned a lot about the Boys and Girls Club, but I think it really makes you appreciate all of the pieces that go into serving all of the groups like the Boys and Girls Club in our community, and I appreciate all of your efforts. It was nice meeting some of you today at the school, and I just wanted to make sure that on behalf of the commission, you understand how much we appreciate all you do for our community and of course, the service of all those volunteers. I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, AmeriCorps and Senior Corps members, serving in thirty-six locations across the city of Lawrence, are actively addressing challenges facing our community from fighting food and housing insecurity and running after-school programming to supporting health and financial literacy and training our youth for the future. National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership training for those who serve. Whereas AmeriCorps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas a corporation for national and community service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to recognize the impact of service on the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service, April first, two thousand fourteen. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April first, two thousand fourteen, as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to the communities. Thanks for picking this up. Thank you. Thank you all. So the next proclamation is to proclaim April seventh through the thirteenth as Public Health Week. And who's here to speak to that?
Logan, I have a few.
Great.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to proclaim next week as Public Health Week. I have a couple of ambassadors for public health here. This is our second opportunity this year to recognize health champions in the community. So we have Logan Brown and Ellen Young, our youth and adult award winner for this year. They both do marvelous work in the community, and we're gonna recognize them next Friday, and everyone is invited to that breakfast at seven thirty at the community health facility. That's just part of our National Public Health Week recognition. The theme this year is Healthiest Nation in One Generation, and so much of the evidence points to that the work you do directly impacts the health of our community, and you're doing great work. So many of the things that you recognized in your speech have such a strong connection to health, and we're very appreciative of the work that you and your commission do.
Thanks, Dan. You wanted to say what these fine ladies did that brought the recognition?
Sure. Logan Brown is a volunteer at Gotta Gee Safe Center, and if you were to read all of her list of accomplishments, you would think she's forty. Just so impressive. On her way to Vanderbilt next year. Ellen Young works really strongly and hard with Red Dog and working with running in the community, so trying to motivate and encourage women to run.
Great, we appreciate you coming tonight, and we look forward to your being honored. I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas good health and quality of life for everyone in Lawrence is an important goal for our community. And whereas the role of public health is to protect, promote, and restore the public's health, and whereas the health of our community depends on many factors, such as individual health behaviors, education, jobs, quality of healthcare, and the environment. And whereas National Public Health Week provides the focused opportunity for the public to learn about our communities, public health concerns, and success stories. And whereas action by community leaders to implement policy changes that promote the community health plan goals of healthy eating, active living, reduced poverty, improved access to healthcare and mental healthcare will make our community a healthier place to live for the current and future generations. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of April seventh through the thirteenth as Public Health Week in Lawrence, Kansas. Thank you, Dan, appreciate you very much. All right, the next proclamation is to proclaim the month of April two thousand fourteen as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month.
I have people.
You do have people.
I'm Elaine Penny, right now the president of our support group, and we have many of our board members here. Our group has been around for about twenty years, serving the community of people with Parkinson's and their caregivers, and the people who take care of them to educate them about the illness. That means health professionals, people who plan for curb cuts and stuff like that, and nursing home administrators and physical therapists, as well as our own families as to what we need and what helps and what works. This particular support group has built a wonderful community of encouragement and some sense of humor occasionally, which has been very healthy. Roger is the punster of all time, wherever he is. Spreading the news about research and healthy attitudes leads to hopefulness, which is our greatest product. And your support and your awareness and participating in this national effort to raise awareness for the month is something that you do to help us with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Elaine, this is something that I like doing. I've been a part of this for seven years, and I've learned a lot about Parkinson's disease by your making the community aware, and I appreciate all the work that everyone does to help facilitate and provide insight and help to those who are in need when it comes to Parkinson's. I'm gonna go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas Parkinson's Disease is a degenerative brain disorder that affects a million and a half adults in the United States, with over fourteen thousand people diagnosed with Parkinson's in the state of Kansas alone. And whereas more individuals suffer from Parkinson's Disease than multiple sclerosis, muscular dystrophy, and Lou Gehrig's Disease combined. And whereas the symptoms of Parkinson's Disease include tremor, rigidity, slowness of movement, and difficulty with balance and speech. The causes of Parkinson's Disease, though not known, are under intense study. The neurological department of the University of Kansas Medical Center has been designated by the National Parkinson's Foundation as a center of excellence in conducting ongoing research to improve treatment and discover a cure. And whereas April eleventh has been proclaimed World Parkinson's Day, a day for all to recognize the need for more research and assistance in dealing with the devastating effects of Parkinson's Disease. And now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand fourteenth as Parkinson's Disease Awareness Month in Lawrence, and urge all citizens to extend their support for those struggling with Parkinson's Disease and the loved ones trying to help fight the battle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Fourth proclamation this evening is to proclaim the month of April two thousand fourteen as Mathematics Awareness Month. Hello again.
Hello, I am Bojana Pasig Duncan and coordinator of all those Math Awareness Month activities and outreach in, at university and in Lawrence. And I've been coming here for over twenty years, every year. So thank you very much for having us here, and this year, we will celebrate mathematics, magic, and mystery. So it's a lot of curiosity behind that. We love math, we promote math, and we want your children to participate, but children are neighbors, friends, and all, everyone should be involved. I brought with me representatives, is Professor Bayer, who is associate chair of our department. She will say a few words.
Great.
I brought very important representatives of two important organizations, graduate organization, Codi, and Christina in charge of Association for Women in Mathematics. And I brought my colleagues, Tyrone Duncan and Jolt Talata, who will tell you a few words about that exciting competition for your children and everyone in town to come on Saturday to competition. Few words each of them if we can.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I just want to say that Math Awareness Month is a national event, and it's been celebrated every April since nineteen eighty-six. Each year, a theme is chosen, and typically, do we have to leave?
Kid just, a kid just pulled the thing. I just watched him. This is the first. Is there a mathematical solution to this problem? I don't know what. It is, it is.
Oh, maybe I should go.
You can go on, it's not too loud, I can hear you, please.
So, so I was just, I was just reminded that actually, we here in Lawrence started before the national beginning in nineteen eighty-six. In the last number of years, the theme has usually been something about applications of mathematics. But this year, as you heard from Bojana, the theme is mathematics, magic, and mystery. We want to celebrate, as mathematicians do, the joy that comes with discovery in mathematics. And we hope to convey that to all, especially to children, that mathematics is interesting and fascinating, even magical and sometimes mysterious. Each day of April, if you go to the website, which is mathaware.org, there's, a new mystery is revealed, and you can learn, see an exhibit on a new theme, a new topic in mathematics that you and your family and friends can enjoy. And then locally, we have quite a number of events scheduled. You'll hear about the competition. We also have workshops for sixth graders from Topeka and from Lawrence, and we will have a public lecture on a theme related to the, this year's Math Awareness Month theme. So I hope that you all encourage your family and friends and yourselves to learn about the joys of mathematics this month.
Excellent, thank you.
So I just would like to announce the mathematics competition in the two thousand fourteen Math Awareness Month. The competition is organized by the Department of Mathematics of the University of Kansas, and it's at three levels, third, fifth grade, middle school, and high school. It will be held on Saturday, this Saturday, April the fifth, in Snowholm at the KU Lawrence Campus. Registration begins at two P M. Online registration and more information are available on the website of the Mathematics Department. The exam starts at two thirty in the afternoon, and students have forty minutes for five problems. Each exam is graded by multiple faculty members, and the names of the students are removed before grading. The competition distinguishes itself from other competitions by grading the mathematical work that the students show for the solutions. We are proud of the rules of the competition that promotes fairness and logical thinking.
Another important event that we have every year is a collection of workshops for fifth and sixth graders from local elementary schools, and that's something that the graduate students of the math department are heavily involved in. Myself as president of the Math Graduate Student Organization, and Christina, as you've heard, president of the Association for Women in Mathematics, together with numerous other graduate students, both from mathematics and economics, and undergraduates from the Kansas Algebra Program and the Uken Teach Program. And these workshops, there will be two of them next week, on April eighth and ninth, and then one on the twenty-third. They run for about two hours, and they consist of four activities that are put together by the students, the graduate students, and they are intended to educate and excite the elementary school students about mathematics and its applications as they relate to the theme of this year's Math Awareness Month, as you've heard.
Very nice. How's the turnout usually?
Usually, we have about twenty-five to fifty students for the workshops. It depends, there's a group that has come from Topeka for the last couple of years, smaller group, they are a math-focused group, so more advanced students from a variety of schools in that area, and that group is about twenty-five students, and then we have students from elementary schools here in Lawrence that are about two classes, so about fifty students each.
Very good. Well, I know it's distracting, but I'm gonna go ahead and try to read this proclamation. Thanks for all your hard work in trying to educate and bring up our community in the mathematical field. Whereas mathematics is the foundation discipline for science and technology, and mathematical reasoning, analysis, and problem-solving are increasingly vital in preparing our youth to lead productive and responsible lives. Whereas mathematics is a living and growing discipline continually being created and discovered, the power of mathematics is revealed in the richness and beauty of its intellectual structure and the diversity of its applications to almost every field of human endeavor. And whereas the beauty, challenge, and excitement of mathematics and its potential to enrich individual lives required that through mathematics education, we make its opportunities available to all our citizens. And whereas the Joint Policy Board of Mathematics, a joint venture of the American Mathematical Society, the Mathematical Association of America, and Society for Industrial Applied Mathematics, was established to articulate and advocate sound public policy concerning the mathematical sciences and the field's ability to contribute to the public welfare. And whereas the Department of Mathematics of the University of Kansas is dedicated to the creation, application, and teaching of mathematics and to serving the mathematical needs of our community. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand fourteen as Mathematics Awareness Month, to be observed in the schools in the city of Lawrence in recognition of the importance of mathematics and mathematics education. Thank you. Thank you. Okay.
Update on the alarm, the fire department is turning it off. Apparently, it's not as simple as taking batteries out of the smoke.
No.
So, they're in route. Sorry for the distraction.
That's okay. I saw it happen. Otherwise, y'all be leaving.
I think Roger got the other kind.
Okay, the next proclamation is to proclaim the month of April two thousand fourteen as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Hi, I'm Jen Preston. I'm here tonight representing the Douglas County Child Abuse Prevention Task Force, which is over forty local organizations and community members that have come together to bring awareness to this month and this activity for the last two years. So, some of the events that we're planning this week, Diana's gonna be passing around pinwheels, which is the national symbol for Prevent Child Abuse Month, which is shown to increase people's attraction to learning more about it, because what do you do when you see a pinwheel? You think fun, you think kids, you think happy. That's what people want to think about child abuse prevention. Even though there's staggering negative statistics that we could ramble off that's locally within our backyard, we know this, we want to focus on prevention efforts. So that's what the pinwheel's about, that's what our task force is about, and thank you, Mayor and the commission, for agreeing to allow us to plant five hundred pinwheels at City Hall on Friday. So anyone wanting to come down and make a pinwheel garden with us, Friday at noon, we'll be planting five hundred of these pinwheels out front of City Hall, as well as we have nearly twenty ambassadors going around town the next month, presenting a hundred and fifty random acts of kindness towards adults and children and youth that are having a positive interaction. So they all get a candy bar, as well as a bookmark and a sticker to say thanks for having a positive interaction. In addition, we're doing a lot of other county proclamations tomorrow night, and we're also doing...
Earth Day Parade.
Oh, Earth Day Parade, yeah, so you'll see plenty of pinwheels, the Earth Day Parade, yeah, and we'll be at the booth selling our pinwheels, so if you want them for children, or they're a great deterrent in the garden, too.
Yeah.
Either way, they're very useful overall, but thank you for letting us proclaim this month as Child Abuse Prevention Month Awareness.
Oh, you're welcome. Oh, you're welcome. I'm glad you sent the email, and I was happy that we were able to facilitate your garden of pinwheels in front of City Hall to match our other wind-driven sculpture.
Exactly.
So, it'll be crazy on the eyes there on that day. So, we appreciate all you do, Jen, and of course, people who dedicate their lives to preventing this. And I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. "Whereas children are key to the city's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. And while children are most valuable resource, they are also our most vulnerable resource. And whereas children have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas child abuse and neglect can be prevented by supporting and strengthening families in Douglas County, Kansas, through the five protective factors. One, nurturing and attachment. Two, knowledge of child and youth development. Three, parental resilience. Four, social connections. And five, concrete supports for parents. And whereas we must come together as partners so that the voices of our children are heard by all, and we are, as a community, extending a helping hand to children and families in need. And whereas by providing safe, stable, and nurturing relationships for our children, free of violence, bullying, abuse, and neglect, we can ensure that the city's children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this city, state, and nation. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 as Child Abuse Prevention Month." Maybe the fire alarm will be turned off by then. Here comes, here comes our public servants. The last proclamation is to proclaim the month of April 2014 as the Fair Housing Month.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Jason Barnhill. I'm the Chairman of the Human Relations Commission. We're a board of nine individuals from diverse backgrounds. We work to deal with inequality and discrimination in the City of Lawrence on behalf of the citizens. And I'm proud to be here to accept this proclamation on behalf of, Fair Housing Month is an extension of what the mission of our group does, and that is to prevent discrimination, not only in fair housing, but in all aspects for citizens of Lawrence.
Jason, we appreciate your service on that board, and please thank all the members when next time you convene, thank, on behalf of the City Commission, for your service to the community, and I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, since I can't think. "Whereas April 2014 marks the forty-sixth anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing, and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, age, marital status, disability, familial status, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the City of Lawrence supports efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing by working to educate all of its residents on fair housing rights and responsibilities, and through enforcement of fair housing laws, including Chapter Ten of the Code of the City of Lawrence. And whereas the month of April is officially set aside as Fair Housing Month throughout the nation. Now therefore, I, Michael Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, in conjunction with the annual national commemoration, to hereby proclaim the month of April 2014 to be Fair Housing Month in Lawrence, and ask the people of Lawrence to join me in reaffirming our obligations to fair and equal housing for every person who reside or wishes to reside in our city." Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, and all matters listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered under one motion and will be enacted under one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on that item. If discussion is desired, then that item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. Is there an item that a member of the Commission would like removed from the Consent Agenda?
Mayor, item three, the claims for separate vote, and also, we had an email asking for, asked to consider pulling Ordinance Number 8840, which is Item 6B.
Item 6B and claims. Okay, anything else?
Licenses.
Okay. Licenses is number...
Four.
Four, thank you. Okay, with the exception of Items Four and 6B, and with the addition of claims to vendor, one hundred and sixty-nine vendors of two million sixty thousand and eighteen dollars and forty-four cents, is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda by Commissioner Shum, second by Vice Mayor Amick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero. The next item to add back is a subtotal of Rock Chalk Park-related items of nine thousand and seventy-five dollars.
Move.
A motion by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Farmer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes four-zero with Vice Mayor Amick dissenting. The last item, or the next item is three, I'm sorry, four, which is licenses, and I believe Commissioner Shum has an item he needs to accuse himself on.
I have a conflict of interest with all the license holders.
Okay. Is there any other discussion or public discussion on this item? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
A move, approval of the licenses.
Second.
Motion to approve the licenses listed, and Item Four by Commissioner, or Vice Mayor Amick, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes four-zero with Commissioner Shum abstaining. The next item on the agenda is Item 6B, which is Ordinance Number 8840, which expands the rental licensee program to all rental units in the city, with certain exceptions noted. Is there any public comment on this item? Okay, any public, any comments from the Commission, or is there a motion to approve?
Are we on 6B?
6B, sir.
Why was it pulled off, I guess?
We were asked, had it pulled off by an email.
Oh, okay.
No public comment.
I'd give approval, that's what we're at.
Second.
Motion to approve Item 6B by Commissioner Shum, seconded by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes three-two with Mayor Dever and Vice Mayor Amick dissenting. All right. City Managers Report.
Well, I'd like to report on something else. I'll spend just a few minutes on the items that we've got in this week's report. We've got January and February Infrastructure Report on Rock Chalk Park. One of the things I'm going to ask and see if we can schedule a little bit of time next Monday or Tuesday afternoon with the full Commission to go out and take a look at Rock Chalk Park. You will have on next week's agenda the temporary occupancy permit that will allow it to open up temporarily for the Kansas relays. I think it would be helpful for you all to go out and see the work that's been done there. Got the annual report from Scott's Department, would encourage you to take a look at that information. Public Works Department got an award from their National Association. We're going to be having a meeting here towards the end of the month with neighborhoods in regards to the transit hub location that we're looking at at Twenty-First and Stewart Avenue. Will be, I think we've got some discussion points that we want to have with the neighbors in regards to that. And finally, a little bit of information about the St. Patrick's Day Parade.
Okay. Any questions for the City Manager regarding the City Manager's Report? Well, thanks for the highlights, Dave, appreciate it. Okay. This'll be interesting. So, the next item is the, are the regular agenda items, and really, this is all about us moving forward with the Commission and hopefully electing a new mayor and vice mayor for the City Commission. I've spoken a lot this evening, so I'm going to keep it short. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, to work with these gentlemen and all the great staff at the city. It's been a heck of a year. We have a lot to be proud of, and we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. For me, it's been probably a little more time than some, but I think the job of mayor consumes a lot of your time, and if anyone thinks about running for election, they need to make sure they take that into consideration, the time and effort it takes. I look forward to trying to elect our future mayor and vice mayor this evening, and I just want to thank all of you for your service and the ability to work together. It's been a very collegial group, and I am impressed with the work we got done and the lack of issues that have come about in, under most of our discussions, and I just want to give you my heartfelt thanks for all the time and support you gave me this last year. Thank you.
Real quick, Mayor, I want to thank you for your service to the community. I mean, it's, trying to keep up with you the last year as your vice mayor was something to behold. I mean, to tell you, I never thought that there would be a difference in serving like when you're in your thirties as compared to being sixty now, but you know, there's a little bit of difference. But I will say one thing, I appreciate the passion that you have for the job and for our community. I mean, it's incredible to see. I want to thank you for that, and you know, not too many people get this opportunity. I'm here on Tuesday nights and, you know, pipe up with something, and the mayor has this look. I mean, it just, he just turns that head, and I'm thinking, oh my, I'm doing something wrong now, but I know it's right, I know it's right. So, anyway, I appreciate the look, and again, I appreciate your service.
Thank you. All right.
I'd like to add my thanks to your good services last year. I thought that you did a great job leading us, and there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff the mayor gets to do that we don't ever know about, and you only know about it once you become a mayor. Last-minute meetings and massaging situations and trying to keep things rolling. If you see a well-oiled meeting, well-oiled organization that moves forward all the time, there's somebody back behind there pulling the strings and pushing and tugging, and that's the mayor. So, thanks for all your effort, and hope you enjoyed your time along.
Yes.
But don't go away.
Right. Well, thank you, Bob.
And I would, I would say, I remember a conversation we had shortly after the election last year, and you told me that you were looking forward to learning with me, and gosh, man, I feel like all I've done this year is take from you, so I appreciate being able to learn and to get some dust on my face from walking behind you, and supporting you, and I couldn't think of a better person to be sitting in that seat for my first year here than you, Mike. So, thanks for all of your hard work and your dedication, and grown to really respect and appreciate and admire you as a person and as a Commissioner, too. So, hell of a job this year. Thank you, appreciate it.
And I also appreciate the ability to serve with Mayor Dever, because as a first-year City Commissioner, I learned a lot sitting to his left. I have a great respect for the job that he does and the way that he did it. I was just amazed every week on the ability to keep us on task for us as the City Commission to work together. To me, the sum of the total is much more important than any individual here, and that's one of the things that Mike taught me, and I will take that to heart and learn from that, because each of us does the best we can, and I was very appreciative of his efforts and his ability to lead, and look forward to another year of him on the City Commission.
Well, thank you, those were kind comments. I appreciate it, I echo all of them back to you. So, the next thing on the agenda is to conduct a election for the seat of mayor, and I need a nomination for a person to be considered for mayor?
I would nominate Vice Mayor Amick to be our mayor for the next year.
And I will second that nomination.
Okay, great. Well, the, there's a motion to approve Vice Mayor Amick as mayor for 2014-15, and a second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Congratulations. Well, we can switch seats afterwards about that. Your job is to now, that you have control of the meeting as mayor, and I want to thank you again for the time you serve, you know, is it twenty years you've been doing this?
Been a while.
Wow. Twenty years.
1983.
You are, you are the man.
That's thirty years.
No, but I mean, he did some other stuff in between there, right? Yeah, yeah, so.
Certainly an alarming situation.
Anyway, Mike, I look forward to being here with you as mayor, and thanks for your time and service.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, and thank you, thanks, everyone. I really appreciate this, and I want you to know that, but we'll get to those comments in a little bit. We're going to try to speed this along real quick, because the alarm is starting to get... I'm shaking a little bit. But anyway, the next item is to conduct election of Vice Mayor. Are there any nominations for the office of Vice Mayor?
I would move that Jeremy Farmer is nominated for Vice Mayor.
Second. Motion and a second to nominate for Vice Mayor Jeremy Farmer. Are there any other nominations? No?
No.
No?
No. No.
That was made by Terry.
Terry, and seconded by Bob.
Motion was made by Commissioner Reardon, seconded by Commissioner Shum. All in favor of Jeremy Farmer being our new Vice Mayor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes five-zero. Jeremy, congratulations. Well, I have this long speech, but like I said, we're going to cut this thing down a lot. You know, I want to take the opportunity to thank my fellow Commissioners for giving me the opportunity and giving me your support to serve as mayor. Also want to thank the public for continued support and allowing me to serve as a member of the Lawrence City Commission. It's a, it's a great privilege, and it's a great honor to be able to do that. I want to thank my wife, Marilyn. You know, Marilyn is truly the public servant here, is that you stop and consider, and Bob can recognize this, Marilyn's been a member of the Lawrence City Commissioner's life since 1983, and she's done a wonderful job. She's truly my best friend, and I appreciate everything that you do to help me. You're the one that has to listen if I get a little bit upset, and that's not very often, I'm here to tell you. You know, I take this job very serious, and, but, you know, leave most of it here so that Marilyn doesn't have to endure a lot of, a lot of that. Also want to thank our son, Chris, who's not here tonight. He really grew up as a member of the, you know, what did he tell me one time, how tough it is being a mayor's kid? And that is something that, he did pretty well. I want to thank our friends, you know, guys, I appreciate everything that you do for us and still invite us to some of the cookouts in the summertime, you know, even as much as it's got to be a deterrent to have me around, but anyway. Again, as Mayor Dever said, I want to thank our entire staff. I really appreciate all the work that you do in providing us with, a lot of times, very important information so that we can make the decision for the entire community. Sometimes we disagree, but one of the things that I can always say about staff is that they have really come forward, and if we disagree, they still carry it out the way that a majority of the Commission says that it's going to happen. You know, again, one of the things that happened was, is over the weekend, I was really starting to wonder about, you know, the level of excitement that I would have in being mayor. I was mayor thirty years ago, and I really thought, okay, will I have that same level of excitement? I'm here to tell you something. Saturday, you know, it started kind of, kind of getting there a little bit, and then Sunday, I started getting nervous, and I said, you know, yesterday and today, and it was kind of like I was telling an interviewer a little bit ago, he said, you know, I'm like a kid with a new toy, I've got to jump out of my skin, but I am really excited about the job, and hopefully I'll be able to keep up with Jeremy. I'm the only guy around that has had two vice mayors in my life that, you know, you guys are like six foot five. I had Aaron Cromwell before, now I have Jeremy Farmer, and, you know, these guys, they'll take care of me for a long time. Along with, what Mayor Dever... Along with what Mayor Dever mentioned before, a lot of the job as mayor and city commission is a continuation of a lot of the work that has started before. You know, I plan on continuing the hard work on job development and the importance of Lawrence Venture Park as we look to the development of the future and good quality jobs in Lawrence, Kansas. I really want to stress the work that we have to help local businesses in Lawrence, Kansas now, you know, from smallest to the largest, being able to make ourselves available and see if there's things that we can do to be able to help those businesses, being able to develop new jobs. They're already here, they have made the commitment, it's time to help them move up in being able to hire new people. The Bioscience and Technology Business Center, that is something that's so important for as incubator facility in those new startup businesses, being able to start up in Lawrence, Kansas. Our job is to make sure that they are able to continue and grow in Lawrence, Kansas. As mentioned earlier, you know, the decision about a new police station will happen this year. That is something that is so important to the community. We need to have that discussion and that decision made earlier rather than later. You know, one of the things that has been important to me over the last 15 years, I suppose, has been our continued repair and maintenance of our infrastructure. Dave, you and your staff have done a very good job of being able to take the funds that we have earmarked for the maintenance items that we have and being able to make sure that our streets and our infrastructure, pipes in the ground are really starting to come around and people really appreciate it. Another item that's extremely important to the development of this community is going to be the new wastewater plant. I would love to have that item decided before next April. Dave, I know that there's a lot of work to be done, but I think that, you know, the commission that is on board has, you know, the information to be able to make that decision. I think that it is something that is so strong for the future of our community, we need to be making that decision this year. Gentlemen, we're going to be busy this year. As Dave said, one of the things that I think that is, you know, having field trips, if we say, to look at the investment that we have made in our community for the future of our community, we need to go out and see where we are, look at the items that are being prepared for the future. We need to go out and make sure that they're proceeding in the way that we want them to. You know, we're very fortunate to live in a great city like Lawrence, Kansas. We are able to have the discussions every Tuesday night about what is important to Lawrence, Kansas. You know, we have a lot of talk, we really do. We have a lot of discussion and, you know, we're going to continue to do that. I promise each of you, I will try to run the meetings the best I possibly can, but I am not going to miss any public comment. I want you all to know that. It is so important that we're able to do that and continue to be able to have those items come before us. One of the things that I would like to do, and I haven't had the chance to talk to staff about this, but one of the things that I think is very important. Last week, we had probably one of the toughest discussions that we've had is I've been a member of the Lawrence City Commission, you know, and we talked about rental registration. And, you know, we had made a lot of comments back and forth to one another. But one of the things that happened was, and one of the things that I think is really important, is I want to do something without hinting or looking at or having anybody fear or talk about a change in form of government, is we have our first item. I'm going to start talking about asking members of the Lawrence City Commission to step up and be in part of the carrying out of some of the decisions that we're making, Dave. And one of the things that's important is, and you told me, if we can do it or how we can do it, is with the rental registration that's happened last week, there was a lot of comments again, and, you know, it was a little warm up here at times. But one of the things that is important is I think that that program with the concerns that we have, I'd like to have a member of the city commission, specifically Vice Mayor Farmer, being able to work with staff so that as a liaison from this commission, to make sure that it's carried out in the way the Lawrence City Commission, and especially the majority of the Lawrence City Commission, sees that it can happen. I think that that is so important so that we avoid, you know, problems that may exist and so that we don't end up with saying, okay, I did it wrong, you did it wrong, somebody did it wrong. That's not the case. We need to be a part and we need to be part of the solution. Jeremy, I'd ask you to do that with the affirmative of the Lawrence City Commission. There's an action that we have to take, Dave. Let me know because I think that that's important. Some of the rest of you, I'm going to ask you to be involved with items that come forward. Mike, you had asked me about serving in a capacity yesterday on an issue that you know more than anybody on this commission about, and I appreciate you stepping up and doing that. And I imagine we'll be able to talk to you about that and other things. Bob, you and Terry also, being able to be involved with a great many things. You know, here again, I think that one of the things that's important, and as we look at the rental registration program, we all want it carried out fairly. We all want it to be according again to the wishes of the Lawrence City Commission and make sure that it's done right, okay? And that is extremely important, Dave. You know, I wanted to say this in closing, I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I look forward to working with our entire staff and I look forward to working with every member of the public. So anyway, thank you all again for your support. I hope that I can truly live up to the expectations. I do have one thing that I do want to say that I almost forgot in all of this with the alarm, but the job of the new mayor is to make sure that we recognize the outgoing mayor and all the accomplishments that he has done. We have a commemorative gavel presented to Michael Dever, who is outstanding leadership as mayor of Lawrence, and this is from April 16, 2013 to April 1 of 2014. I can truly say this, and again, I go back and talk about the look, you know, but one of the things is, is that that is...
Woo-hoo!
First official action. But, you know, I will say this, Lawrence, Kansas is a better place because of your years of service. And I want you to know that, and I really, I truly appreciate the work that you've done.
Thank you, Mike.
Anyway, Jeremy, you having comments?
Sure. I had an interesting thing happen today. I drove from Just Food to 15th and Waukerus and my wonderful staff had put student driver on the back of my car. And I left it there. It's still there. I might keep it there for a few days, but I felt like that was an appropriate gesture, not only because today is, of course, April Fool's Day, but also because that's what I've tried to be this year in learning from people that are far more wise than I am. And I don't think tenure has anything to do with how knowledgeable folks are. And I just appreciate being able to learn from all of you. Mike, we've had a blast in the past year and our little side conversations and different things that have happened.
You got to treat me better.
And I'm looking forward to serving with you in that capacity and I've got a feeling that even in your, as you tried to very subtly describe it, decrepit state, just kidding, that I'm going to be the one trying to keep up with you. And so we have fun like this, y'all. I mean, it's okay. It's good. Mike knows that I love him. And to the rest of you guys, I mean, this has been a great year of learning. Terry, I appreciate all the time that you spend going to lunch with me and or letting me go to lunch with you, either one of those, and hearing all the stories that you have and getting to come over to your house and have dinner was fantastic with you and your bride. And it's just been a lot of fun serving with you in the past year. And Bob, the same. I mean, first of all, your barbecue's really good and I patronize your restaurant frequently, but, you know, I just, for what you were able to get accomplished last year, I think you set the bar really high for this commission. And I hope that we've been able to keep up with the pace that you set last year. And Mike, you already know how I feel about you. I think you're wonderful and I've just enjoyed getting to learn from you and with you and appreciate all the investment and time that you've taken talking to me and texting me and emailing me and answering my questions and talking me down from ledges and, I mean, it's just been incredible. So thanks from the bottom of my heart for that. And I never thought, a year and a half ago, when I declared that I was going to run for city commission on January 14th, that I'd be sitting here. It certainly is kind of neat to be able to come back to the place that you were raised and to be able to serve in this capacity. And I'm extremely honored that, you know, that that took place. And it's not something that I take lightly. It's a job that I take very seriously each and every day. I think we've accomplished some good things. I want to say the thing that I wanted to accomplish more than anything and will work to continue to accomplish over the next three years is continuing to build consensus amongst our community. And sometimes when you move to the middle, nobody gets what they want. But that's an important lesson for our community and a part of our story to tell is we have to continue to compromise and work together and work with each other and talk to each other. And I never want this body to be like our state and federal legislators where we all hate each other so much or where our community hates each other so much, where we don't really want to talk or interact or work on things that may take time, effort, and energy to refine and to get better. And so I want to admonish all of us in this room and those that are watching and those that are going to be reading about this tomorrow in the newspaper and watching on the news tonight, that we continue to work together to build strong consensus in our community. Terry, you said it, the sum of the whole is greater than all of its parts. I think that's synergy. That's what we need to continue to do. We're better together than we are apart, and I'm going to continue to trumpet that message as we go throughout the next year and as we go throughout the next two. We have to continue to work together and we've got a great group of folks up here to continue to do that. I'm looking forward to serving with all of you guys for another year, certainly. I want to thank a couple people from our campaign last year that have worked so hard, not only to get me to be here, but also to, you know, to be people that I've leaned on for the last year. Gary's here tonight, Rex wrote, and Gary, thanks for your leadership and for all the time that you spent with me on the telephone and email and talking me down from ledges, too. And I just appreciate your friendship and your leadership and all the things that you do in our community, both seen and unseen. Thanks for your investment in me, and I really appreciate it. Jessica Beeson's not here tonight, but I've also leaned on her a lot in the last year. And I want to thank her for all of her leadership as well, for all the time that she's spent, not only to get me here. Gary and Jessica both ran my campaign, but she's been tremendous as well, not only in serving on the board at Just Food, but also talking me through different things here and offering a different perspective. Sue is here, you and Al, you know what I think of you, you're like my second mom. I certainly would not even want to do this without you and your help and support and your compassion and your love and your grace and offering to have me over after commission meetings and let me stay as late as I want to, just talking through various things that have happened. Not many people know this, but, you know, Sue will frequently watch the meetings and we'll have conversations about it afterwards. And there's no better person than I can learn from than you, Sue Hack. So I love you dearly and appreciate you very much. And Al, Al as well. I don't want to forget you, but all of your counsel and wisdom over the last year has been greatly appreciated. My mom's here tonight. I'm extremely blessed to have such great family in this community. And, you know, Mom, I appreciate all of your support. I love you with all my heart. You are hands down my favorite person in the world and, you know, I hope that you're proud of me and I hope that I continue to do you proud. And, you know, I don't want to say that I'm doing this for you, but I hope that you can have a smile on your face in knowing that I'm doing what you thought I would do with my life. So I love you. And then I wanted to talk just briefly. Brevity is not certainly one of my strengths and neither is saying the right thing at the right time. But I do want to talk about a few priorities that I think it's very important for us to have as a body over the next year. We've been talking about a new police facility and we have to make that a priority and we have to, on the heels of all the other things that are happening in this community, we have to let the standards by which we let govern our other city departments be the standards by which we also govern our police facility. And folks, it's going to cost money, it's going to take time, it's going to take investment, but we have to step up to the plate and lay the groundwork and the foundation for many years to come. We have to put our money where our mouth is and we have to let our police officers know that they're important, that they matter. We have to let them know that we care about the facilities that they have to go in each and every day. And I'm looking forward to having that conversation and hopefully by the time Vice Mayor, or now Mayor Amick, is giving his State of the City next year, we can talk about how we've laid the foundation and gotten a new police facility passed and funded and hopefully start construction because I'm looking forward to cutting the ribbon on that sucker in the next couple of years. In addition to that, continue to grow our local economy. We heard Mike talk about downtown redevelopment, which continues to happen. I was blown away at a conference that I was in recently in Washington, DC, how a city planner from another large city in the country talked about the wrong way to grow your downtown is to build density there. I thought that was the most ignorant thing I've ever heard in my life. I'm so proud of the work that we've done and making it a priority to help more people live downtown so that they'll shop downtown and eat downtown and drink downtown and want to play downtown. I think that's been the secret to its continued vibrancy and success and looking forward to continue to do that. And last, I tell people that I really have two jobs as the director of Just Food, that I'm a cheerleader and a storyteller. And I think we as a community need to do that so much better than we ever have before, to be cheerleaders for one another, to be cheerleaders with one another, and to continue to tell our story of why Lawrence is absolutely the greatest place in the world to live, to work, to play, and to be that there is in this entire world. And last, I want to thank all the city staff that invest hours and hours and hours and hours and hours in fields, phone calls. Scott, I'm looking at you specifically for all of the hard work that you put in with 8840. I mean, I don't think anybody understands the amount of work that putting together an agenda. I remember being at a conference with Dave and Seattle and Bob and Terry were there as well. And Dave's fielding phone calls on Thursday afternoon at 2 o'clock, trying to make sure to get the agenda set. I wasn't even thinking anything about it. I didn't think anything about it until I got the email in my inbox, but it's something that they worked hard for all the time. And so to all of you guys that work so hard and diligently, our public safety officers, planning department, public works, city manager's office, utilities, I'm sure I'm forgetting many, many others, but thank you for all of your hard work and investment. We would not be the city that we are without you. We would be the city that we are without us, but we would not be the city that we are without you. So thank you. I'll shut up. I'm done. Appreciate having the opportunity to share.
I did want to recognize real quick two other people that are in the audience along with former Mayor Hack, former Mayor Bob Moody, probably one of the best friends I have in the entire world, and former city commissioner Hugh Carter, you know, and hopefully I didn't miss anybody. So anyway, thank you all for coming this evening. Patsy Vanish, I guess, but anyway, our other very good friend, Bob's wife, Patsy. Anyway, but that being said, the next item on the agenda is the most important part. We have a recess for approximately 20 minutes for a little reception outside. So we need action on that? We can just go eat cookies? Let's go.
Just leave.
Oh, wait. You guys have anything that you want? I'm sorry. Anything to say?
No, okay.
Let's go have the cookies. Did he have something? Did you have something?
I was just going to say congratulations.
Oh, well, thank you.
And look forward to working with you.
I was going to yell a little bit, but, you know, the alarm's off.
Yeah. That was disconcerting.
Okay. Thank you all very much again.
Thank you.
Let's go have 20 minutes of cookies.
Congratulations.
Thank you all. Public comment. Any general public comment this evening? Marilyn, you got anything? Okay. Nothing.
Nobody?
Yeah. Then the next item is future agenda items?
Mayor Commissioners, we've got a few items listed on the memo for next week. The note sale is usually our first regular agenda item. Got a public hearing on a structure on Tennessee. The 9th and New Hampshire items, you recall when you set that date. That's proceeding. Dan's been involved a little bit in the discussions in regards to the mural. We do know that the construction work at the southeast corner of 9th and New Hampshire, they're making a request to keep the northbound lanes closed longer than what they projected, so you'll have that on your agenda. And as far as where we, one of the other major items is going to be then the occupancy permit that we've been working with, the KU representatives and their contractor in regards to the Rock Chalk Park improvements. We're obviously very much involved in the public improvements and then inspecting and trying to assist in regards to the work in regards to the stadium for the Kansas relays. So they will have a request for temporary occupancies. We're going to have that on next week and maybe some of the other items related to Rock Chalk Park as well. And so that's what we've got next week.
Any future agenda items from the Commission? Commission items. I do have, I guess, a couple. We need to set a time and place for city manager's evaluation, and I suppose that if everybody could work it in, I'd like to do it either Monday or Tuesday before our next meeting.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Would you like to do it next Tuesday?
Tuesday afternoon.
Could we combine that with going out to visit the parks?
Well, I was going to say that we could, we need probably a couple of hours anyway for Dave's evaluation, just thinking out loud and getting any discussion at all. Rock Chalk Park, hour, hour and a half?
I think we just went to Rock Chalk Park. I mean, I think we could, you know, probably put 10 minutes, 15 minutes out there, at least 30, 45 minutes. We'd like to walk you through the very impressive stadium below where you can see a lot of the work that's been done. I mean, there's not a whole lot to point to in the parking lot. You'll see the parking lot as you drive through it, and then you can spend just a few minutes looking at the recreation center. So I'm thinking it might be an hour there of planned time, so maybe a total of an hour and a half of travel and time there is what I would think about that. And then there's other things we could go see, too. So a tour of the library.
Yeah, well, that's going to be on the next field trip, the library and the whole deal, unless you want to do an entire Monday afternoon, Tuesday afternoon.
Are you fine with me?
Do four hours of, if you want, do the evaluation of the two tours.